There are even some inch and a quarter water lines that the city has all the way down through there. It's all outside the city though. You know, that was a defunct system that they lost the well and just tied into the city and all of a sudden we're responsible for it all. Well, we're down there looking, trying to find something out for a homeowner that's got a leak because Matt has gone down there multiple times and said you're losing, what is it about 12 to 14 gallons per hour? There's a small leak somewhere on a two and a half inch line. Well, his house is about between a quarter and half mile away from the water meter and not on his property. It's on somebody else's property. So all this stuff was just put in and hodgepodge together. What are you looking at Lou? Well, okay. There's a delay of noise in the closet. I don't know if there's a microphone in there. We'll worry about it later. I'll slow down. Okay, something going on in the closet. If you would make a note to that. Yeah, me, myself and I. I hear it. Me, myself and I. So something's going on with live stream. We don't know what it is. So imagine you've got a water meter. So imagine you've got a water meter that's reading. And we've shown him, we've taken those readings last week, last month, last year. But it's all that distance away from a house. And it's on somebody else's property. You know, and we start getting all this, uh, you're responsible for finding this leak. Well, the leak we've owned to the meter. You own from the meter to your house. Well, people don't want to hear that. You know, and we're going to try to help them, but there are limits to what we can and can't do. So that kind of issue is what exists outside the city. This our, this your water system. No fire hydrants. We don't know where any mains are. We've got old ads built that are 45 years old. And we're going to have to go down there and start doing some pothole and then find some of our stuff. I don't know if there's a control valve there anywhere. But that's one of the nightmares that we're fixing to have to start dealing with on the water system. Wastewater. Uh, we had the little gizmos in here some time back that Cor and Maine brought in. And really, I'm keen on this. So Mary Ann went back and forth with me. Is this, you know, should we bid this out and this kind of stuff? I still don't have the number. They're supposed to be getting the number. This is one of those big things I want to get. They want to come in and assess our sewer system, identify eight to 12 manholes that we can come in and put an AMI system in to read where, how much infiltration's coming in. I'm going to give you an update on that in just a second, too. And begin to narrow down where these problems are. That we've got collapsed lines, lines that have been bored through and all this kind of stuff. So this is doing assessment of our system and zero in specifically on the number and location of where we want to put the automatic metering devices in manholes. The reason why this is not a bid item, and I explained to Mary Ann, is because, and I don't know what the number is yet for those, whatever number that's going to be. I'll have it shortly. Uh, is because we're using the same, our water system and our same radio system. And everything would read the same way. And we'll be able to bring it into public works down here and have real time numbers, which are critical. Good thing to know. Uh, our reads, I think is working well. We had in the month of July, 686 calls. You see 620 of those were minor alerts. And going out and just looking and calling people. We had what? I'm trying to remember. Uh, swapped a meter two times, had one major alert high flow and other. Uh, we do have problems. Carly's trying to address this with builders in Stonebridge. They're taking liberties with our meters and running them all the way up to the house. If we let somebody do that and get away with that, then we own from the meter to the main. Not good. It needs to be down here close to the street so we don't have to dig up somebody's whole yard to get to a water meter. So they've taken a lot of liberties. They're, they're mix mashing. Uh, they're taking a meter over here and putting it on a house over here. And it's throwing off our system and this kind of thing. So if you hear any static about builders, trying to dress that up and get them to act right. So that is our equipment. You know, I'll let that go. Let that ride. All right. So I got this number this afternoon at the board meeting, you know, the West Rankin Utility Authority. Uh, this is good stuff. This is, this is what we base. You know, you say things so many times, you wonder if you've said them too many, too many times. And the West Rankin Utilities, there's seven members. PRV, Flowood, Pearl, Brandon, Richland, the airport, the hospital, and the Jackson International Airport make up the seven members in here that you see them listed there. So our last year's flows, what has flowed the last 12 months dictates what our next 12 months or payments are going to be. Last year's flow, figured all up what's, what's comes through those meters. And I've got a sheet of that. I'll be glad to get it for you. Uh, you know, high rain events, we're probably getting up 17, 18 million gallons. Normal is about 13 million gallons, 12 million gallons. Hard to believe that that many gallons are going through those pipes, but they are. Key for us, though, in looking at this is if you look at Brandon and you come across that line down there, you see that we've had a decrease. So we're seeing a decrease in our sewer rates. Significant enough to where Tracy and Mary Ann and Carly and I are going to have to sit down and calculate what that's going to do to our utility bill. So we could see some decreases in, because that's the treatment cost that goes through. This is not garbage pickup. It's a treatment cost. So when you see that big of a drop, uh, you know, a 14% drop, 14 and a half percent drop, that, that tells me two or three things. Well, number one, on behalf of West Rankin, as a board member, we paid off one chunk of debt that we had. That debt's gone. Uh, that was some trunk line stuff. Uh, we are coming out of a drought over this last year. That's going to impact that number to some degree. So I don't know if you're going to see a boomerang effect and you're going to see it go up next year. And most importantly, we're tightening up the system. We're tightening up the system. The more you tighten it up, and it goes back to when we played the first one I saw of these below Crossgate spillway and said, get your calculators out and figure five gallons a minute. So those are good things for the enterprise system and look forward to lowering our sewer rates a little bit. And you see the comparison of where else it's gone up and down, that kind of thing. So I tracked it out. I asked Tracy to pull some numbers out and I went the last three years. So that's the, the drop from this year to last year and last year to the year before that. So we just want to keep tightening up our system as best we can. And I think Bruce Stevens, who lives in Crossgate, does a great job. He's the only employee really that we have. And we, we contract all that out with MSI, which is a subsidiary of Hemp Hill. And they do a good job of treating it and watching it. All right. Now, that's good news. Looking at that, that's good news. And looking at this, this is not so good news. So this was the one thing I asked the county to be careful of before they ever did anything. And of course, just like a lot of people, they don't care what I say. Uh, this is the sewer system. This is one of those locations where just leave it alone. Leave it alone. It's kind of like water outside the city. Uh, Hebron Hill and Reed Road. Just leave it alone. Just leave it alone. You know, we'll get to it one day. So this is E Smart Drive. And if you start going down through here, you really, you take in everything from the pavilion, the fire station, Reginate, the daycare, Mandy's down there. Uh, you take, uh, rented buildings, you take outlook, it just goes on. E 911, the sheriff's office, bah, all that kind of stuff on that side. Then on this side, you take in, I think there are 116, 112, 116 residents in Forest, Lake Forest Apartments. Uh, and actually, the one line that you see that goes up from there, we're just getting, trying to get to Highway 80, goes all the way up and takes in the alternative school. Take in three gas stations, four eateries, couple of other shops up and down through there. Barbershop up and down Highway 80, but all that goes through there. And Matthew worked this out for me because I'm saying, if you're going to be running big trucks over that sewer line at the very bottom, I told them up front, there were six. I can count one, two, three, four, five, six. There are six sewer lines that that road is going to be running over some portion of it. If you're going to start it, you might as well go ahead and run it under the railroad track. If you're going to rehab all this and do a CIP, a Cure In Place project. CIPP, Cure In Place Bike. If you're going to start it, you might as well just do it right. So we're going to be gearing up to present you with, you're going to be spending $850,000 to fix that sewer line. I can just imagine big trucks running over it and vibration. One of those is still tile stuff. Tile, tile was used in the 40s. So it's just ancient stuff that it's like a yellow jacket nest. Just don't, just stay away from it. But we, I don't believe we're going to be able to stay away from it. So we're going to have to fix it. So you're going to be gearing up to pay for that. And fortunately, it looks like you can borrow money from DEQ at 1% or something like that. So that'll be the type of project that we gear up to do. Uh, the bank out front, uh, that's a substation over here that you see is on the left on Highway 80. That's Trustmark Bank there. The deal we did with Trustmark Bank was to build a road all the way behind both of those lots. We built one of them halfway and just kind of waited to see what else was going to show up. Well, what showed up was the project next door to us here. And we still own, if you look in that yellow box, let me back up one. If you look, you see the yellow box where the red arrow is pointing? You see the little white, uh, thin looking shaded area there? That's where the street was. So that's city property on that corner. We looked at selling it and that didn't work out. But I'm proposing to you that as we're building this street, uh, and we're further along than, than you would think, if you hadn't gone out there, you should go look, that we turn that into parking. Uh, last week, last Thursday at two o'clock, they poured a eight inch slab on top of that gas line that is 15 feet wide by 50, I think, or something like that. Third, what, 30? 30 by 15, eight inch slab on top of the gas line. I've already had the gas line. People look at it, they're happy with it. Uh, the green lines that you see there are power going back over the interstate. I've been in three meetings with Rankin First, one of, two of which are real, I think, possibilities. And that's where the power will come from to feed those businesses on the other side of the railroad tracks, on the other side of the Marquette Cement Plant. So that will be a maintained easement for energy and we'll go under it. And so that's the road that's being built. Glad to see that. So while we're building a road, we want to add public parking down there where the red arrow's at. And that, that public parking will look like that. We can get 10 spaces in there. There would be a first come, first served basis for whatever happens here. Anywhere we can get some additional parking, I think we need to get. I've asked the thrashes about doubling the parking lot on this end to give us another rundown to there, to try to double that to get even some more parking. So we'll see if it works with their buildings and that kind of thing. Um, I haven't even thought about going this way yet, but I guess I might need to consider that at some point in the future. We had real estate meetings here recently and they were parked all over the world. It's just, uh, you know, good to have those kind of problems. Um, forgive the Harrell Street, that's up at the top. It's ancient again. I'm flying through this train, trying to get thawed out. So from the Jackson MPO, we recently finished. Leslie does a great, great job, as does everybody else at Central Mississippi Plant and Development District. We underwent a review every four years of the processes that we use in handling grant money. Uh, pass that in compliance with everything that the federal government says, which I'm glad of that for MPO. And on top of that, I've got a letter here, I've got a copy of this from, and I don't know where this money's coming from, but this is a call for projects from, uh, the Department of Transportation for TA projects, Transportation Alternative, which is multi-use paths and sidewalks. So, uh, that came online August the first. Matthew, do you have a chance to look at it yet? Okay. So, you know, anything that comes up like this, we're going, just, it's my nature. You're just going to have to make me hell calf rope for us not to go after any federal dollars that are out there if we can afford to do so. So I've also got this printed for you. Uh, part of MPO, part of the problem with MPO, just I'm going to say any city, not Brandon. I'm going to say any city in the tri-county area would reach out there, any county, any, any of the three counties would reach out there and try to lock up some money. And then they'll spend four or five years out here trying to find more money to do that project. Well, that's really unfair to everybody else in those, in all the other counties or those cities that they lock up that money. So we have inched toward processes that say, you're either going to use that money or that do that project, or you're going to give the money back. We've had one project that we gave the money back on to date. But these are our timelines that MPO has established for us on these crossovers on Highway 80. We're always struggling to find projects that funding will match. In other words, they kick out, they're going to continue to kick out. Resurfacing old 471, resurfacing Lewis Wilson Drive and things like that. Because they're not, they're not in such bad shape as compared to the rest of the world. But every time we can find a way to make some peg fit in a hole to where we can get some federal dollars, we're going to try to get those federal dollars. We're going to go after them. So these four will come online later next year. I've got some other ideas we might want to add to this, but we'll see. This is Ryan Murphy on Highway 80. I met him in the rain two weeks ago out here. I've been trying, it's just not going to happen. So I finally settled down and said, we're going to get all these crepe myrtles from here all the way around to the interstate, looked at, and the medians cleaned up all the dead, cut out of them and all that kind of stuff. We just got to pay somebody. I kept thinking I could take inmate labor and get out there and do it. But I used to tell you, if we got that many projects going on, we are, we are that busy. So he gave me a quote for $4,900, take care of all the crepe myrtles, get rid of all the dead stuff, the land, you know, blah, 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 and, and then haul it all off. The one on the right is something I've been trying to do for, uh, I hit Sam with it when Sam started with us and still can't get to it. But I really think it would help beautify Highway 80 in Crossgate. Uh, a guy that's a landscape architect like Sam calls this raising the crown. I call it cutting limbs off, getting to where you can see underneath it, is what I call it. I just believe limbing a lot of that up to where you've got visibility to the lake and you clean that ditch up, there's some concrete work that needs to be done in there for better water flow, stormwater flow to get it down to the, uh, what goes under Highway 80. And I just believe that would really help Crossgate. So we've, we've gone long enough. If you're wondering why we haven't attacked bushes and trees anywhere in the city. And, uh, it's because we wanted to wait till the last minute to make sure what was going to die, was going to die, and what's going to live has a hope. And we'll try to let it limp along and come back to life. I can tell you, I'm riding the roads looking. Gosh, put out that, uh, that work request, take some more dead trees down. We're going to talk about that tonight. I got only genitalia to reject that because both bids were over 75,000. I'm still seeing trees dying, particularly hardwoods now. Not so much pines, but I'm seeing hardwoods that are still dying, you know? So, uh, anyway, I would ask that you consider those, if you think those are viable ideas. I, I would say two things. You can tell me go on both of these tonight, or you can tell me go on the first, or you can tell me don't go on either one of them. Or you can tell me go on the first one and let me bring the other one back to you. Uh, number two, uh, in two weeks after they finish their first blop of work. And let's see what kind of work they do. And if they do sufficient work, quality work, then we might give them number two. So I would ask that you consider those. But I think cleaning up Crossgate Lake would be a big attribute to the whole city. How much time do I have? 12 till. Um, again, eradicate the Highway 80 tree lift at the top. I had two or three more beyond these. I just kind of condensed these last four that I want to talk to you about. Uh, signalization, uh, there is some work going on. I don't know if any of y'all were in downtown Brandon or you saw the Facebook stuff about a mobile home coming through downtown that got sideways and ran off into beds and all this kind of stuff. And I've been pounding Neil Patterson with, with him, Doc. And finally, the thing that happened needed to happen. And Sam and the chief got ahold to the driver. It never made any sense. I never, ever see anything going the other way in their system. They don't know if somebody fat fingered something or got something wrong on the height of the bridge at Tricklin Bridge Road. Their system shows, I can't remember the exact number. It's a foot difference in elevation between the eastbound and westbound lanes. So on westbound is showing it to be a foot higher. And I mean, I'm on the phone with them today, they're trying to track it down, you know, 14 inches or something like that. So they're fearful of, of the height. And I'm just going, well, I better, I'm not going to say what I said. So, you know, that bridge has been there since the interstate was built. So the only thing that could have changed that height was another layer of asphalt. Same thing. And I did, for those of you that haven't been around enough, uh, the Crossgate Bridge is just as old. But what they did there, they, they dug it down a little bit and lowered the asphalt and changed the bed. That might have to happen again out there. But their dad, they're issuing it because westbound traffic shows it to be shorter than eastbound traffic. That's the explanation I have. Number two, Mississippi Diabetes Network, we were contacted by them. Uh, if we wanted to participate, they were reaching out to just a small handful of cities. And I said, well, sure, we're interested, you know, to do free testing for us. I knew that we all owe free. But that's to come in and do some early testing, uh, you know, blood pressures. Uh, you know, all the testing wouldn't cost us a penny. Uh, employees wouldn't have to do it unless they wanted to do it. And surely we're going to do that, you know? So, uh, Cornerstone Tank, I've got, I had an email from Elizabeth. I don't remember Elizabeth's last name. I'm sorry, Elizabeth, if you're looking from Michael Guest's office in Washington. She's going to be here next week. We'll come by. Uh, we had asked for 1.5 million to help us with the tank at the new Cornerstone. Uh, we had asked for 1.5 million to help us with the tank at the new cornerstone well, which they got all coming along for well, right? Coming along, all right? So for a tank and a distribution line. So that's the mains and the tank. I don't know what we'll put a tank up for. Once we get that, we'll put it out for bid, but it looks very promising. It made it through the three steps and has been voted on by the House and had to go to the Senate, da, 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 da. Now, we still hadn't gotten word yet from the Department of Transportation about the 4.5 million when they get into these continuing, uh, resolutions and all that kind of stuff. But both that has already been approved and it looks like we're gonna get help on a water tank and distribution main. So I look forward to that. That might be something you want to write down, Tracy, as we work through that. All right, Rankin County rezoning. As of today, this afternoon, Sam has received a rezoning request and a conditional use request from the county. So now we have that. So we are looking at how, you know, how can we expedite that? By printing it in the paper and going through our normal legal process. Uh, we have found where my worry was coming up on, uh, Labor Day and missing the paper by a week. So if you don't have it in to the paper the week before, it's not gonna make the printing of that paper, so you lose a week in there. So I had that conversation with Sam this morning. He and Mark went back and forth and we believe we can salvage that by, uh, condensing it down a little bit. Mark, you might want to explain that a little better than I, but I, you know, so that it's the, gotta be publicized in the paper for two weeks before it comes to you. Uh, we can achieve that with a special call board meeting of the planning commission, so it can be on our next agenda. And then there has to be two weeks beyond that board meeting that someone could protest and all that kind of stuff. Yeah. That's why Mary Ann's grimacing. Right. So we're trying to squeeze it down by putting one on top of the other, for lack of a better word. I think, uh, Carly has a couple of read-ins tonight as well. One, you know, and I'm sorry, but these things are coming at us, uh, lickety-split. I know it drives Mary Ann crazy to have this big of an agenda and still having read-ins and you not having the material in front of you to begin with. Uh, but it's just, uh, we take it as we can take it. And I, I'm a firm believer that good government takes care of business when it can take care of business. All right. That was an awful lot and I didn't get any feedback. I just got a lot of eyeballs. If you made notes on that agenda, Mary Ann is gonna start doing that, uh, making an agenda like that for work sessions. So you've got something hard copy in front of you, so you can write down a note. But it makes it easy for her keeping minutes, uh, to where we've got that and, uh, we can, um, begin to incorporate it. Yes, sir. I hit everything on this, no, Mark. There were things that didn't make it on that list that, that, uh, I didn't have when I was trying to build this. I mean, I'm running around. Hang on, I can, well, I can get you the, that list. I think I touched on just about every item on there. Ah, thank you, Chris. MDOT has a federal grant that is tying in, uh, every signal, sounds crazy, from College Street on Highway 80, all the way to the other side of Clinton. I don't know if that means they're gonna be setting up cameras, looking at traffic and that kind of thing, but it's some technological something that, uh, that MDOT really was sold on. He told me about this last year. And he's gonna tell you, we still gonna have officers changing signals. You just can't get around. But that's what's going on. So if you see some stakes downtown, that's what's going on. So, and back to Highway 80, uh, I'm gonna tell you, as soon as I have an opportunity, we're gonna be doing, uh, with your approval, I'm gonna be putting Highway 80 from College Street to the interstate as an LPA project. I'm just, I'm tired of asking, tired of fighting MDOT to add that lane, a downtown lane addition. So we're gonna turn it into an LPA project and begin to solicit funding on our own. So, there we go. Would that answer your question? It, I don't, I don't know how to say it any better, but it's every signal on Highway 80 corridor. And, um, a lightning strike, a power surge, change it. And those boxes have been known to be fried. Sometimes they get sideways. So, you know, it's all, if you ever see one like that, please tell me. So I can go around here and get into Lewis Electric and MDOT and get in their heads to say, I need you to come check this out. Or light this out, or, you know, nightlight or street light or something like that on one of those poles. I need to hear it, please. Uh-oh, we're in a heap of trouble now. That's the mayor, some of the mayor's youth council. Ladies, I'm glad you're here tonight. I've already done a little bit of a pitch, but who's gonna do the talking tonight? Just one? Y'all gonna stand up and come up to the microphone? That's what I'm talking about. So we've got the Christmas parade gurus in here. All right, we'll get started. What time is it, somebody, please? We got two minutes, we're gonna get started in two minutes with the board, three minutes with the board meeting. Thank you, board, very much. Mark, I'll get you this list. You got, you, okay.
Yeah.
How's the live stream working?
Good.
Working good. All right, folks, I want to thank you for coming and thank the board members for being here for an hour and these departments. So, really appreciate that. Lot going on in Brandon and blessed to be here at this point in time. So, this evening Alder Lady Sharon Womack is going to lead us in prayer and Alderman Dwight Middleton is going to lead us in the pledge.
Please bow your heads. I'm this gracious heavenly father, what a wonderful day you've given us again today. We thank you so much for this day. We thank you for the blessings you've given us, dear Lord. We thank you for the opportunities that we can meet together as a board and as a body, dear Lord, to make the decisions that are the best for this wonderful city that we have. Please watch over us, watch over our first responders, please keep each of us safe, help us to keep you first in all that we do. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Kitchen?
Luke?
Wait. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going to say hallelujah, board. I think we finally got that comma out of there. I hear it. Isn't that right, Mayor's Youth Council? There's no comma in one nation under God, isn't that right? Luke, it sounds good when you said it. Appreciate that. All right. I'm almost scared to ask what you laughing about. And by the way, we're going to have a big one, so get ready. Lot going on. All right. All right. Is anyone here this evening that would like to make public comment before the board? Come forward, please. The microphone's on. Test it.
Hello, does yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And who are you?
I'm Kendall Goza and I'm here to represent the Mayor's Youth Council with the pitch for the Christmas Parade for 2024. So, the packet you were given at the work session was designed by me, Carrie Goza, my mom, and Jennifer Merchant. And we decided to work together to come up with a theme and ideas for the new parade. I'm just going to briefly go over sort of what the packet says just for a second. So, the theme name we came up with was Home for the Holidays: A 50's Blast to the Past, which incorporates Home for the Holidays of Brandon and our hometown, but also with defining the theme, which is 1950's. Then you probably saw the three logo ideas that are shown on the page. And then the four categories that floats could be entered as are TV and movies, pop culture, classic cars, and music. So, there's different ideas that I listed for each of those categories, like White Christmas, Lassie, and Grease for TV and movies, Elvis, Dean Martin, or Bing Crosby, Louis Armstrong for music, Diners, Drive-In Movies, Jukeboxes, and Hula Hoops for pop culture. And then anybody wants to enter a classic car, probably 60's or older, could be entered into the parade as well. And my mom and Jennifer, we are all I Love Lucy fans. I've been raised on the show my entire life. And they would like to propose the idea that they would be the grand marshals dressed as Lucy and Ethel, and I included pictures of them in the packet. We have visited the Lucille Ball Comedy Festival in Jamestown, New York multiple times, and they did dress up there. And they've been dressing up as Lucy and Ethel for a while now, just for Halloween and costumes, but we're all big I Love Lucy fans. And I would also like, so that's the end of the packet, but I would like to ask on behalf of Mayor's Youth Council for $3,000 to give $1,000 to the overall vote winner and then 500 to each of the four category winners, TV and movies, pop culture, classic cars, and music.
All right. Did all of your board members up here get a copy of that handout? Great. Board, you got any questions for Kendall? I know everybody loves the Christmas Parade, so they're going to work through this under the guidance of Mr. Baker here, and we'll figure something out to help the Mayor's Youth Council either through probably Ranon Chamber or Main Street one or two and see what we can come up with. So, hopefully we'll be able to get you to come back in a week or two. I know that I'm already getting comments about and questions about the application to apply, and we need to talk about that once y'all have your election here in a couple of weeks and zero in on those registration numbers and the theme. So, we're getting a theme out there now, which one more time, what is the theme for the parade?
The 1950's.
The 1950's, okay. All right. Thank you, Kendall.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Now, you not going to introduce the rest of your entourage?
I can.
Well, come on.
So, this is Lila Burley, Sarah Bray Everett, Ainsley Howington, and Clara Matthews.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate that. All right. Here we go. Anyone else that would like to make public comment tonight before the board? All right, seeing none, we will begin to work through the agenda, and I know we have at least two items to read in tonight, board, so please bear with us as we work through it. All right. Motion to approve the work session and regular board meeting minutes of July the 15th, 2024. Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack. Taken by Mr. Luke Coker. Any question on those minutes? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right. Under the mayor, there are 10 items. I'll take them all 10 slowly and speak on each one if something needs to come up on each one of them, Mr. Baker. Good? Number one, consideration to reject the two quotes for the right-of-way tree removal in various areas throughout the city. Had to attach the list and authorize administration to proceed with advertisement to bid. We had two quotes, they really weren't bids, they're quotes, they're professional services contracts. They were both over $75,000. This is the third time we've done that. To remind everyone, we're doing that so that we can track how much we're spending on taking down dead and diseased and harmful trees on public properties, especially on roadways. Just in case, there's some federal money or state money that might come about at some point in time, we would have a record of what we spent. Board, I was going around, I still got, I think, six or eight trees to paint a big X on, so I need to tighten that up a little bit more. And if you see a tree that I'm unaware of, I'm trying to paint them, so I need to see them, please. We're going to put that out for bid. I do have some thoughts on this, and I would appreciate your feedback on the questions I'm about to ask. There need to be some kind of criteria, I think, this type thing that many people are trying to get into now. If you don't have a lot of experience, it could create a problem. Some of these are almost hanging over houses, and someone that doesn't have a lot of experience could cause problems. Of course, if it's a tree on a right-of-way, we've already had one house damaged in Spears Cross, and we don't want any more if we can help it. But I think, you know, years of service, if they've done that type of work, whether they have workers comp, whether they have liability insurance, and most do have a million in any other, I don't know how I would begin to quantify the equipment, proper equipment that they would have, or any certification of chainsaw operation or things like that. So, I would ask that if you've got any ideas on that, I would appreciate your thoughts. Mr. Baker, I would appreciate your thoughts as we generate a bid packet to put out. And, you know, the clock's ticking on dead and diseased trees. Every windstorm brings a hazard, and Mary Ann, I'd like to have that down and in front of you to approve as we go forward next time. Now, we've done this twice before. The first time, I think, was 26, 27, I can't, 48 was another number, but this time we just kept adding trees and it got up over 75, started encroaching on $100,000. More than what I felt comfortable with doing as a professional services agreement without some criteria on it and opening it up for general bids. I would appreciate some feedback from you folks, please, as to your thoughts as to the professionalism and all the work they've done for the city and that kind of thing. So, I would ask that we're rejecting that, those quotes. All right. Number two, consideration to approve the payment of the removal of right-of-way trees along Luckner Road to Dats Tree Service in the amount of $54,200. Quote was approved at the board meeting on June the 17th. He completed that work last week. Number three, consideration to approve pruning and cleanup. Yes, sir.
It seems like we approved that for like $44,000.
Thank you for that clarification. I put that in a memo as well. There were, I think, eight additional trees that I didn't put an X on up and down through there that were pine trees. Two or three were stumps, shorter ones that he didn't charge us for, and he went back and ground them. But directly across from Sterling Drive, there was a group of three or four big pines that had died too. Kind of falls into that if I go out and mark, or anybody does, go out and mark trees now, three weeks later, there'll be another one or two. So, yes, sir, it is more for that reason. And was that sufficient when I put that in the memorandum, Mark? Did you read that? Okay.
So, I got a question. So, once you finish with Luckner Road, before you go to another area of the city, will you go back and re-mark or?
I'm going to re-mark everything that's been marked again, and Tim and I actually started putting a dash on the ground, a little bit easier to pick up on asphalt on the edge of the road. But we're going to hit them all again and then give you a good example of the ones on Value Road. Just in too big a hurry, didn't slow down enough. There are three in there, one's hanging out on the road, needs to come down. There are two pines on Lewis Wilson down at Candy Farm Parkway, there's a half-dead pecan that's actually leaning over a house. It's just places, I'm going to have to help people narrow it down where they go. But I did a pretty good job on the rest of them, it's just the ones that got added at the end. But if you don't see an orange X, please let me know. All right, so that was number two. Answer your question, Dwight? Thank you. Appreciate you asking that question. All right. Number three, consideration to approve pruning and cleanup services of professional services contract to Murphy's Lawn and Landscaping in the amount of $7,932 along the north side of Highway 80 between Stone Gate and corner of Lake Bend condos fence. All right, so that's kind of a, I've got those two quotes right here. That's not exactly, Mary Ann, and this is my fault, not your fault, Mary Ann. I had two quotes, I brought them out in the work session, I'll be glad to point them down. One is the crepe myrtles on Highway 80 back around the exit 54, and then the other one is pruning in between Woodgate and Stone Gate in front of Crossgate Lake. So, it's really two different things. There they are, there are the quotes right there. Well, I'd like the board to give me a little guidance on if they want to do the pruning on the crepe myrtles. Well, that's yours. I'm just going to read it to them. So, board, I had that in the work session, your thoughts on improving? Help me out here a little bit if you're.
Absolutely. I'm fine.
All right, so I've got.
The only is aesthetics, it's a safety issue in a lot of these cities.
I agree. All right, so board, we've got one that's 49. What's the number of the one you got, Mark?
The one that you got me again is 793250, the one that you asked me to approve more as 49575.
Well, it's that one and this one, so, I'm sorry. Okay, all right.
So, that's a type of 498.
Yeah. That's my fault, Mary Ann. I got those this morning, so I've got them both up here and giving them to Mark. He's correcting the record as we go. Right? Okay. All right. So, that's two items. We're combining into one, or you're going to keep them as two, Mark? Okay, thank you. That makes perfect sense. Item four, consideration of a quote from manhole inspection at various locations within the city from Core and Main in the amount of $7,685. That would be technology that matches up to our water system radio read meters. Number five, consideration to give Live Nation permission to make periodic requests for terms of use sweeps directly with Ticketmaster in order to prevent scalping of the tickets at the amphitheater. Number six, consideration to approve a professional services limited license agreement with Fun Guys LLC versus the Magical Lights. I had that run a show. That's the Magical Light show that we have done four years now, this will be years five. Consideration to approve an invoice from Baker, Donaldson, Bierman, Caldwell, Berkowitz representing the East Metro Commission in the amount of $1,428, 25% of the total invoice. Board, that is likely to go away. I've been an advocate of abolishing the East Metro Commission once we make the final payment, and that's hopefully coming up this October. It will go away. Number eight, consideration to advertise in 2025 Mississippi Tour Guide for the purpose of promoting tourism in the city. Number nine, consideration of approval of a municipal reserve fund for the city of Brandon. Number 10, consideration of request to travel to Tunica, Mississippi to attend the MML Fall Board of Directors meeting. Okay, go ahead.
Mayor, just on the advertising, I just asked the board to consider after approving that in accordance with 1731, which allows for advertising, favorable notice and opportunities, possibilities of the city for finding that that mode of advertising is in the best interest of the citizenry. And also, I've just got the code section for the Mississippi Reserve Fund, the Municipal Reserve Fund of Section 213522, which I'll put in a minute.
Okay?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
With the Live Nation, the terms of use, exactly, if they do find a problem, they just shut it down, okay?
You want to describe when somebody else may?
So, what it does is it's a way to keep tickets, you're only, under terms of sale, you're only allowed to buy so many tickets, okay? And but people use bots. And when you see a show that's got a bunch of ticket sales that are kind of crammed into one, then you've seen a bot. And so, what Live Nation can do, what we do, what Grace does, is she does that, but Live Nation can kick it in as well. And so, just going to have a lot of people looking at this to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to buy tickets, is what it is.
Okay.
Mr. Baker, can you explain what a bot is?
Yeah, it's, I'm just. It's missing, it's missing the road.
You know, when you have to check that thing, how many bikes you see in all these little boxy pictures, and you get it wrong three times in a row?
Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Chris Svensson, second by Ms. Sharon Womack. With or without the bots, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Appreciate you listening to me tonight. All right, so Ms. Mary Ann, it's beginning to look like your section, I was going to say, you're looking a little bit too much like Public Works tonight, I was going to tell you. And I keep throwing more at you.
How's that? Much better?
More better. Thank you.
Can I take the first six together?
Would you like a break after six, please? Go ahead.
Okay. Consideration to approve professional services agreements for the purposes of promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill 1521 and other lawful and related purposes. Authorize the mayor to execute the same and to approve payment of off-show related expenditures regarding Jordan Davis, a Live Nation sell-off agreement Brandon Amphitheater, and Sturgess Simpson sell-off agreement A&amp;G in Brandon. Number two, consideration of the acceptance of the fiscal year ending 2024 audit engagement letter with Barlow and Company, P-L-L-C, and authorizing the mayor to sign the letter. Number three, consideration to accept the parcel of land, .54 acres on Harold Street, for the purpose of public streets, drainage utility, and other municipal purposes. Number four, consideration of designating city clerk Mary Ann Hess and city accountant Tracy Ricken as the authorized users at Trustmark National Bank regarding the city of Brandon's business credit cards. Number five, consideration to accept the Mississippi Office of Highway Safety, M-O-H-S, and Brandon Police Department grant agreement for fiscal year 2025, part of the 402 Police Traffic Services funding in the amount of $60,000, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Number six, consideration to approve the two quotes related to the wall roof repair at City Hall and authorize the mayor to execute the two contracts. The first one, Adam Evans Waterproofing Company, Inc., as the lowest and best quote, to remove or replace all concrete masonry unit expansion joints across the front of City Hall. Number two, Malone Roofing Services, LLC, as the lowest and best quote, to install a new termination bar to the existing roof membrane and repair the existing wall to roof flashing.
All right, so we've got a couple of questions here. Microphones on.
Just with regard to number two, we just need to authorize the mayor to also execute that because it was accepted by the city and to formally go ahead and just declare that we're naming that Harold Street. Everybody knows it is Harold Street, and there's a lot of work over the years. So, this is really cleanup. It's quasi-public anyway from the work that's been done out there over the years. And then, that's it for me on those first six.
All right. Is there a motion to, any question on those? There are motions to approve those first six items?
Still move.
You said that? Motion by Mr. David Ferris?
Second.
Second, Mr. Jerry Crane. Any further comment or question? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you.
Number seven, consideration of the approval of the quote from Mighty Incorporated to purchase additional chairs and racks in the amount of $34,115.93 and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Number eight, consideration to approve the quote from Aircon Electon Permission to attend two courses in Pearl, Mississippi, one on September 25 through 26 for introduction to ARC GIS Pro, and the other one on December 4 through 5 for intermediate ARC GIS Pro. He also needs to attend a GIS online course on October 23 through 24 in Gulfport, Mississippi. The classes will teach him how to map our irrigation systems throughout the city at no cost to the city of Brandon. Number 10, consideration to approve the registration travel for the city accountant Tracy Ricken to attend the MSCPA annual conference on August 15 through 16 in Reginald, Mississippi in the amount of $295. Number 11, consideration to approve the disposal of shredding of the fiscal year 2019 payable documents. Number one, the letters A through Z files, check copies and invoices. Two, AP cash disbursements. Three, AP paper copies of the claim sockets. Four, AP pre-check audits. Five, AP empower manual warrants. Six, the AP voided checks. Number seven, AP check registers by detail or summary in department. Number 12, consideration of request declaring surplus of approximately 82 fluorescent light fixtures and 14 stage spotlights, which are no longer of use or value to the city, and authorize the sale of the same on Gov deals. Number 13, consideration to approve a docket of claims for August the 5th, Fox Everett Claims released on July 25th, electronic fund transfers on July 31st.
Thank you, Ms. Mary Ann. Board, number seven, we're trying to get up to enough chairs where we don't have to move chairs back and forth between the amphitheater and City Hall line. And right after this, sometime this fall, if we catch our breath, we're going to have to build some additional storage in the back, back here. But we're wearing out chairs sometimes and moving them back and forth. So, that's the only comment I'll make on that. Any questions about any of those? Board? Mark, you got a question on one? Okay. Is there a motion to approve seven through 13? Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Jerry Crane. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Ms. Mary Ann. I thought you'd want to do all 22 in a row.
I know, I would have let her.
Why don't you, let's just do one through 11. Let's just knock those out since they're on the same page. Let's just knock those out since they're on the same page.
Okay.
And, um, we probably have some comments on a couple of those.
Absolutely. All right. Item number one, consideration to approve pay request four in the amount of $638,658.54 from AdCamp Incorporated for the 2024 overlay project and authorize payment of the same. Number two, consideration to approve the MOU between the board and Alderman, uh, the Board of Alderman and Mayor Butch Lee in regard to ARPA funding as detailed in M D E Q Agreement number 547-2-dw5.15 for the Burnham Road Waterline Improvement Projects and authorize execution of the same. Number three, consideration of a request declaring certain city of Brandon equipment as surplus is listed on the attached memo and authorize the sale of or the destruction of said equipment. Number four, consideration to hire Carter Bowns as a water labor two in the Public Works Department effective August 6 at a rate of pay pursuant to the memo. Number five, consideration to approve the modification of M C W I subaward agreement 547-2-dw5.15 from M D E Q and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Number six, consideration to approve utility adjustment approvals and denials pursuant to the memo. Number seven, consideration to declare an emergency, the traffic signal repairs at Highway 18 and I-20, which occurred on July 3, 2024, and approve invoice M 2024 dot 132 in the amount of $14,917 from Lewis Electric and authorize payment of the same. Number eight, consideration to approve invoice H24023-07 in the amount of $40,350.41 from Hemp Hill Construction Company for general construction services in the month of June at the F Y 24 commodity pricing and authorize payment of the same. Number nine, consideration to approve pay request one in the amount of $74,437.23 from Simmons Erosion Control for the 2024 East Gate Sidewalk Project and authorize payment of the same. Number 10, consideration to approve the bid renewal for herbicide treatment of right-of-way ditches, detention ponds, and cemeteries with Chempro Services Incorporated for the 2024 spraying season. And number 11, consideration to approve invoice H24023-07-54394 in the amount of $8,710.41 from Hemp Hill Construction for sewer point repairs as part of the Hunter, Hunter Woods Sewer Repair Project Group Two of Six, authorize payment of the same and amend the budget accordingly.
All right, take a deep breath.
That was a mouthful.
I guarantee you it was. Mr. Baker has a couple of questions, so we'll listen to him for a minute.
Real quick, on number three, you've got the memo broken down as to what we're tossing and what we're selling, right?
That's correct.
Perfect. The, um, the, um, number 11, is that a commodity? Is that an emergency? Was that a previously approved contract? I don't remember.
We actually got those, uh, board approved. It's part of those Hunter Woods Point Repairs, so it's one of those groups. Uh, this is just two repairs in that group two that they've done.
Okay, thank you.
It's had prior, prior board approval.
To remind, to remind the board on number 11, we sat down, uh, brought in here and brought all those point repairs to you before we do a, a huge, you know, multi-million dollar. I'd rather be spending $850,000 doing a C I P project in Cross Gates than I would elsewhere, but we're fixing those point repairs as a prelude to doing that. And what we did, we sat down, Carly and Tim and I sat down and broke those up into what needed to go first, second, third, fourth, and made a list. And we began to group those into two or three at a time and sending them out to do those. So it didn't hit us one lump sum, and, uh, that's where we are on that. We're about to do the same, uh, in another neighborhood, which is Town Station, down Louis Wilson. Uh, we've got problems beaucoup in there, and we're gonna break it up. We've probably got, uh, 12, 14, 16 bad point repairs we need to make in there, but we gotta figure. That's, this is a good point in time, board. I appreciate your patience with me, listen to me run my mouth. Carly, uh, part of our Town Station problem is we've got storm drains underneath the streets that are full of water from the stormwater retention ponds being full of water. They are not retention ponds, they are detention ponds. They should be kept dry, mowed, and that type thing. Not opening another can of worms now, Mark. I saw you take your glasses off. But it, this is a, this is a big problem for Town Station and other places. Sun Chase is trying to, uh, step up and do it right. And board, I have a, an overall question for you concerning stormwater detention ponds. All of them are gonna have a weakness of not knowing or depending on a contractor to determine what the original base elevation of that stormwater retention pond should be. Now, we have these mapped out. I've had the map in here before showing you. I would like to move forward with getting Benchmark Engineering to tell me what the grade stake should be on every stormwater retention pond we have. So therefore, when a Sun Chase comes to us and says, we got a guy that wants to clean these ponds out for us, it does no good to scrape it off the top if unless you're going back to where it was designed in the front end. Does that make sense to y'all, board? So we're gonna have homeowner associations that are taken advantage of, and it's not gonna be doing the overall good that it should be doing compared to how it was built to begin with. The lesson in that was, uh, was the one we did on, uh, Grand Door. You know, discovered in that, that what was built and what we wound up with was not the original plan set, and we got stuck with that. And you, you start getting into all this street flooding and all these other issues going on, same thing going on with Sun Chase. So I think we would need an engineering report on every stormwater retention pond in the city that we can hang on to. And as we come across people, we can share with them, you know, give them a starting point or something that we need to inspect. And it's coming. The fog ordinance that I've talked about many times, fats, grease, and oils, it's coming. We need to get on that this year, Mark, and you need to stay on me to get that done. Uh, but it's the same way with stormwater retention ponds. We need to get into an inspection mode in community development. Need more people in there that can every year go out and inspect these stormwater facilities to make sure they're on the right track. I'm sorry I got off base here, but it came to mind about Town Station. So we've got flooded stormwater pipes underneath streets that can't drain, which is doing damage to our streets. So I don't know how we, you know, we'll be bringing that up in work sessions coming forward. I, in fact, next work session, I may just target, just to give you an example, just Town Station. But we'll do the same thing as the number 11 here is, we'll break it up and come up with the top four, and then we'll sick somebody in there to start working on those top four. But it's a big kettle of fish, I'm just telling you. Okay? You good with that, Mr. Miller? I can't hear you. All right. So, board, uh, any questions or comments on one through 11?
I do have a question on number seven. The emergency repair for the traffic signal due to a wreck. Do we, do we file a claim against those people's insurance?
Yes, Mary Ann, um, we've already turned that over to her, and she's going to try to give that money back for us.
Uh, kudos to Lewis Electric. Want you to know, uh, as soon as I called them, they were en route, and they were gathering up like, that's a wired signal, it's not a Mastin arm. And chief, I don't remember, but that, probably hour and a half almost, they were back up and functioning. So, uh, kudos to Lewis. We're getting really good service out of Lewis Electric. I really appreciate it. Good question. Any other questions, board? There are motions to approve those 11 items? Motion by Mr. Jerry Crane, second by Ms. Sharon Womack. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right, Ms. Carly.
All right. Item number 12, uh, consideration to declare an emergency, the following repairs and authorize payment of the Hemp Hill Construction invoices for each repair. Number one, at Marquette Road near the G M plant, this was a emergency water valve repair. Number two, 138 Meadow Lane, emergency sewer repair. Number three, 53 Terrapin Cove, emergency sewer repair. Number four, 652 Tricklebridge Road, emergency sewer repair. Number five, 194 Huntview Drive, emergency sewer repair. 22 Quill Ridge Drive, emergency sewer repair. And number seven, 288 Cornerstone Drive, emergency sewer repair. Uh, number 13, consideration to approve pay request two in the amount of $331,584.41 from Thornton Construction for the Marquette Road Multi-Use Path Project and authorize payment of the same. Number 14, consideration to approve pay request one in the amount of $178,418.55. Pay request two in the amount of $23,821.25. And pay request three, final, in the amount of $10,644.20 from Hemp Hill Construction for the Highway 471 Sewer Line Extension Project and authorize payment of the same. Number 15, consideration to approve pay request three in the amount of $224,662.82 from U-Bank, U-Bank Construction Company for the Highway 18, Highway 468 Sewer Force Main Replacement Project and authorize payment of the same. Number 16, consideration to approve contract 23-15239RL from Meridian Speedway LLC, authorize the mayor to execute the same and authorize payment of the contract fee in the amount of $9,375 for the Cornerstone Grants Ferry Parkway Waterline Extension Project. And number 17, consideration to approve change order two from Kane Incorporated for an increase of 35 days in the contract time for the Shallow Park E W P Bank Stabilization Project.
We've got one read-in, right?
Um, Sam said he was actually gonna do it, unless y'all would like for me.
Okay, that's fine. Pardon?
It's up to you, mayor. I've just got it.
Either or.
He's already got it under you.
So you want a read-in on the, you want to ask the board to adopt the resolution with regard to 601 West Jasper Street regarding the cleanup, uh, assessment of the cost of the cleanup and for the penalties?
That's correct.
And authorize the, uh, filing of the same with the tax collector and the circuit clerk?
Correct.
Okay.
Would you slow down and explain that to the board, please?
Well, before previously, you authorized the cleanup, and the work's been done, and so this is the resolution that you spread on the minutes with regard to the cleanup. So you can, if, if there's a possibility to collect it, you can collect it.
Okay, uh, let's see here. The number 17, I had an email today from Hay Nova Street that, uh, said they'd probably be through with that project within the next two weeks out of Shallow Park after they got started going back on that again. Number 16 is something that Matthew's been working on for, seems like a year, and that's boring the railroad at Tricklebridge Road to connect a water main on, um, Tricklebridge to the new water line coming down from the new well. So, kudos to that. All right, you have, yes, sir?
On the clean, on the emergencies on 288 Cornerstone, I thought I looked in there, and that was a storm drain repair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that correct?
Yes, that is a storm drain. That is a typo. Thank you.
I got that.
Sorry.
All right, and then there was...
Good catch.
Now, Chempro, this is it on them, right?
Yes, that's correct. We'll rebid that for the next one.
All right, items 12 through 18, the read-in on West Jasper. Is there a motion to approve those items? Motion by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by Mr. Jerry Crane. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board, and thank you, Ms. Carly.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I've got three items. I'd like to take one by itself and two and three together.
You have a read-in as well?
No, sir.
No read-in?
No, sir.
Okay. Mark, hang on just a second. We're jumping around. Get it called up before we get started. How about that? All right, go ahead.
Number one, consideration to approve the development review application for Brookfield Subdivision, parcel number I-9E-2. This is essentially a preliminary plat approval. We've, uh, been through the rezoning on this. I believe y'all are all familiar with it. It's the old radio tower site. Uh, we asked for some compromises on the developers in losing some lots. Uh, I think we finished out at 34 lots. Uh, we did an administrative variance on the lot width to be less than 10% of a deviation. They did that. We've asked for the hydrology studies. They did that, provided letters of zero adverse impact. Sharon and Dwight and me met on-site with adjacent property owners. I know that the mayor has been out there only cleaning out the ditches. I've walked the ditch with adjacent property owners as well. Uh, but essentially, that's it. The, uh, preliminary plat approval is what we're considering. Um, I know that Mark and I have gone back and forth on the, uh, covenants, and there's a good bit of amendments that need to be made to the covenants that were provided. Um, just taking into consideration our build-to-rent requirements, um, the literature that was included in our temporary moratorium, soon-to-be permanent moratorium.
Okay. Go ahead.
Sam, about, about that item, are, are you going to come back? Because I'm not familiar with the development review application, which is fine, but are you going to bring back to this board a preliminary plat for approval?
Yes.
Okay. So, because at that point, the board would, would want to only approve that plat conditioned upon having had received the covenants with the...
Right.
The language that we're requiring the developers in the temporary moratorium to have, I just don't want the developer to think that this is getting him closer to development if that issue hadn't been resolved. So we'll just say...
He understands.
With the understanding that he can't proceed without preliminary plat approval, which is conditioned upon approval of the covenant, correct?
Right.
Okay.
All right, number two.
Mayor, I have questions about that. So I know in the, whatever it was, the rezoning or whatever we did earlier, we talked about building the, um, foundations up two feet out of the flood zone.
That's our development ordinance.
Yes, in the development ordinance. So, but we are not addressing the streets at all as far as elevations.
Well, typically, the street, the crown of the street's gonna be, you know, X amount, and Matthew can speak to this better than I could, but typically, and I don't, uh, as far as this zone, I'm not sure, but typically, the crown of the streets would be dictated by base flood elevation. And then a lot of times, the house finish, finish floor elevation will be dictated, you know, it'll be typically, I think, it's 18 inches of what's required. We require two feet. So, yeah, the eleva, I mean, we're considering elevations of all finished structures.
I, I guess what I, I just want to be careful about is we have these subdivisions around that we've gotten these engineering reports on, and you can't even get there because the streets are flooded. We flooded out two police cars in one subdivision. We've met about Wind Song multiple times, and I assume the engineer has signed off on all of those. I mean, I can name you a half dozen subdivisions right now that are flooding.
I'm with you, and there was a time that we didn't require grading plans at all. I think that's a lot of what we're seeing issues with are places that were planned without really considering finish grade in relation to flood, I mean, not floodways, but flood zones. And, I mean, obviously, those things are pretty dynamic. They change.
So, I, I don't even remember who the engineer was that, that basically, I guess, did the hydrology study and said that it would have no adverse effects on adjoining property or downstream. But Sharon, you know what I'm talking about? Your subdivision, Old Town, Rain Tree, all of these, I have to believe that an engineer signed off on them at some point.
I can't speak to all those subdivisions. I'm not sure. Um, I wasn't here, but I know that everything that we're doing now, we are looking into pretty thoroughly. I'm sure it's more thorough than we did 10 years ago, positive.
Okay. I, I, I'm just making sure because I don't want to be creating another issue like we have with Old Town, Rain Tree, Wind Song.
Right.
I mean...
And, and I agree. I completely agree, because that's two blocks. I, I see it all the time, um, over in, um, Afton. And, yeah, when we went out there and met, the engineer was out there with us, and that was one of the things we did discuss, was about the water and the ponds, the, the whole thing, which, um, I think as, as Sam has said, um, in the past, I'm not so sure how strict we were on that and following up as... in the past, I'm not so sure how strict we were on that and following up as the mayor's already mentioned, um, the issues of our grandeur, that it wasn't even what was presented from the very beginning. So, um, of course, this is Dwight's, uh, his ward over there, I know he's been out there also. Um, when we met with the homeowners out there, that was one of the things that we did discuss was about the water, where's it gonna go, what are their plans for it, and I think that's the reason, um, this has taken a little bit more time, is we are trying to, Sam is trying to be, um, a little bit, uh, a little cautious, if that's a, the appropriate word, Sam, is that.
So, so if an engineer signs off on this and says it's going to have no adverse effects, is there any liability to that engineer if it does have adverse effects?
Well, what the engineer wrote was, it was very specific to this site.
Exactly, and I think that's our issue.
I understand.
We're looking at one site, but we're not looking at how that affects the site next door.
What the letter...
That's in a flood zone, so the water's gotta go somewhere.
All water's gotta go somewhere.
Correct.
What they were stating is that they are actually improving the capacity of this particular piece of ground. That's all that the engineer sent, said to us. There is a comprehensive study of that creek system, which they, I mean, there's a model of that creek system, which they pulled the data from, and they compiled that with the data from this specific site, and what they did was some benching to increase volume for stormwater, which would actually help downstream. And they, from what I understand, I'm not a civil engineer, but the detention is oversized, that with the benching would actually help. It's actually less of a problem than it is now as a field. And that detention is just slowing the water down, we are increasing impervious surface which would speed the water up, but the detention is what slows it down prior to getting to the creek system, which speeding it up would cause a peak faster downstream. And the engineer is just saying that this site, as planned, will not have any worse, it will not create, it will not create more of an adverse impact than already exists, and actually, it'll be less because they're increasing the volume, the volume and the capacity of the ditch or creek.
Can I chime in real quick on something?
Yes, sir.
I wanna make sure I understand what we're doing tonight, and I'm sorry, Sam, I got, I'm just catching up, but the staff report asks that the preliminary plat be approved, okay? And with it, with the staff report, is the preliminary plat draft covenants and supplemental documents?
Well, we don't, the covenants are not...
Okay, so the preliminary, the, so, so the covenants, the only, and I haven't read them, but I understand that the, that, that one paragraph, the sub-paragraphs that we require is not in here, but he's gonna put that in. Is there anything, is there anything else in the covenants that we need to look at?
Yeah, this is a boilerplate set of covenants that was written based on a certain square-footage minimum house, I mean, this is standard covenants that would be submitted for a neighborhood with this minimum square-footage standard. So, anything in this zone that we would typically require, there's a number of things, so we would need to approve. What I would ask is that we approve the preliminary plat contingent on them revamping the covenants to match what our standards are.
Okay, that's what you're asking.
So it's not, would not be approved without approved covenants.
Okay, Chris, when we went out there, that was what the engineer did tell us, exactly what Sam said, that it would not have any adverse effect on the current water flow, and, and they did state it would make it better. And we questioned them, questioned them, questioned them on that, and, um, that's when we asked for additional, the additional studies and additional testing.
Uh, you know, you know, we, we required the developer of Longleaf to do almost double what the engineering report said, and we still have water in Rain Tree and Old Town. I, I'm just asking if there's any liability on the engineer's part, because five years from now, if those houses start flooding, or if they're pushing water somewhere else, I don't wanna be like Belle Oak and have to go clean out a ditch. I don't wanna be like Old Town and us trying to figure out a way to, to, you know, come up with a solution to that problem that was created by stuff upstream. That's all I'm asking.
I understand.
I mean, you said, we, you look at that one location, and I think that's what we've done on Longleaf, we've done on all these other places, but, but we've created a problem, and I know that was before you, I'm just saying, how do we fix this?
Comprehensive study, which is something that we, we're working on now.
I mean, a third of these subdiv, these, uh, lots are in a flood zone.
In a flood zone, not in a floodway?
Yes.
Very different. But, yeah, I would say, and I don't know what, Matthew, you might have to chime in on this, and I don't know what your errors and omissions covered on things like this, but I think that really all that the engineer of record is, engineer of record is stating is that we are not creating any additional, not contributing any negative effects to the ditch or creek system, that's it.
And, and, and that's all I'm saying, and I'm not an engineer, nobody up here is an engineer, we, we base our decisions on experts.
Right.
But, we've gotten burned by this numerous times.
I'm with you.
And I'm just trying to come up with a solution.
I'm with you.
And make sure we're not creating another Wind Song, or another Belle Oak, or another Old Town.
But that's, it's sort of tricky, though, too, what can we require of a developer or an owner of a piece of property? You know, can we require him to produce a hydrology study for the entire city when all he's concerned about is his piece of property? I see that side of it, too.
I, I know you're saying it like that, but potentially, the answer's yes.
Really?
I mean, it, it's an exaggerated example, and I get that, and I don't think we need to go that far, but, but the ultimate's point is well, well made.
Sure, yeah.
And the point is, is that this development does not exist in a vacuum, and if it impacts other developments, then it has to be addressed.
Right.
And if the analysis that is provided is insufficient, then it needs to become sufficient. That's, that's, and if we need to do it and charge somebody for it, it needs to get done. I don't know who's done it, I don't know, I don't, I haven't read the report, I don't know what it says.
Matthew, come up, so you can share the...
And it's, it's not, I'm not talking about Mr. May in particular or anything like that, I'm just saying that, you know, there, there may be a reason this piece of property's been vacant for a hundred years. Just because it's a vacant piece of property doesn't mean it should be built on.
I agree.
I, I'm not, yeah, I'm not super, um, involved in the design of this piece of property, but I have been involved in conversations and making sure that, um, everything is being accounted for above and beyond, um, expectations. I will go back to one of the original questions about streets and whatnot, our ordinance has changed a lot over the last several years. Uh, we're doing a revamp of it right now, I've got a lot of modifications in there dealing with drainage, and, you know, I was talking with another city engineer just last week about their ordinance, and unfortunately, every one of those bullets is in an ordinance that came from, came from a problem or something that happened somewhere. So, I say that to say, from a street standpoint, I don't know that streets were looked at ten, twenty years ago like they are now, elevations, um, floodplains were treated differently, detention was treated differently. Uh, I do know what Sam's saying about this property is that they are, um, it's going above and beyond what our ordinance requires for this type of floodplain area, which I'm not saying that makes it okay, I'm, I'm just saying, they are trying to look at all the different angles there, um, they are over, they are overexcavating the channel to account for any fill material that's going into the channel. Uh, the way FEMA works their floodplain is there is, that's where the twenty-four inches comes from that we use, and the eighteen inches that FEMA recommends, is they've got some, um, increase in base flood elevations built into their models, you cannot develop inside of a floodway, but you can develop inside of a floodplain. And the reason they, one of the reasons they require eighteen inches of free boards, because they're already expecting that model to increase over time some. So, one of the things our ordinance says in a floodplain is, is you cannot have more than a twelve-inch cumulative effect, uh, inside the city with this development. So, I, I say all that to say, they can't answer that question and give a copy of the model showing that for that basin what the effect is, because there is a model of Terrapin Skin Creek, that may be attributable, maybe, I think that's the main line, there is a Hecras model of that creek that they have, that they can, um, add that subdivision to and see what the effect is along that creek downstream. So, I don't know that they've done all that, I don't know that all that's been prepared, I do know that from a big-picture logistical, uh, hydraulic standpoint, they were able to look at it and say, hey, we can create more volume, our numbers do show that in this reach of the creek from oh-four-seventy-one down to whatever point, we're not having a negative impact. I doubt that they have, I doubt that they could print out the mo, the whole model and hand it to Sam tomorrow. They can do that before they have the construction plans done, because they were just probably analyzing that stretch to make sure at that point in time of spending somebody else's money. That'd help.
Yeah. Any clarification?
So, the act of the, if the board can find a proof plat, it's to approve with the condition that they approve of the final plat, that we're supposed to be approving with the six covenants, five covenants, office, six covenants, two covenants, I'm making an exception, you can apply them to the board and stuff, because it's a covenant, and so they're gonna need the exception to be that night, and I don't know what other ones we're applying on, but that's, I don't have to do the covenants, and that's beyond your purview to do that, you don't want that burdened place on you.
No.
And so, that's open to somebody to put back in the book, to the property's weight on this, because I have a covenant shape, uh, so they can see what's going on, and I was imagining, one of these covenants is supposed to address the minimum elevation standards that you're on the talking about, and what is it?
Well, that'd be in the covenants...
The elevations will actually be on the construction plans, so the, I'm not a covenant guy, I don't, I don't ever look at the covenants, but...
Yep.
I don't think the elevations will be in the covenants, but I've never read a full set of covenants, but...
Yeah, sure.
If you're looking at me, I don't know, I think the covenants need to be approved with the preliminary plat. I, I don't think we should put Sam in that situation that they come back later on and say, well, we thought we were gonna get this in our covenant, we didn't get that, I mean, they need to know upfront what the covenants are gonna say, be my thought, as part of the preliminary plat. Because once, once the board, and I'm just speaking, generally speaking here of the development ordinance and how it works, once the board approves the preliminary plat, the next phase is the construction plans. Construction plans get approved by Public Works, Community Development, they get approved by the departments, it doesn't come back before the board, um, the next time it comes back before the board would be the final plat, that's after they've built it and they're ready to start building houses on it, so I'd make sure, I'd want the covenants...
Well, but that's the risk on the developer, we're trying to help, you know, but, you know, but if, it, it would be wise that the developer not get that approved with that condition hanging out there, and they get the covenants reviewed and approved before he does it.
That's right.
This is, this is what's before the board now.
If I was him, I'd wanna make sure I had my covenants approval, I started moving dirt.
This is a unique situation where the construction documents are already prepared because of what we had to do as far as the hydrology and everything else. We went ahead, I mean, they went ahead and produced them.
Construction plans?
Mm-hmm.
Specs?
So, so does it put the roadbed elevation up higher? And I guess that's my concern, because I've seen Belle Oak where people couldn't get in and out of their homes because water's halfway up on their mailbox. It didn't flood their house, but they can't get to their house, or they can't get out of their house.
Yeah, I'd have to look, take a look at it to see. What, I guess, what, what's your question?
Question's making sure we got the roads up high enough.
You said they did have construction plans, so I guess I'm asking if, if the construction plans show the elevation of the roadways?
Oh, yeah. Shows everything, all the elevations, inverts, all the pipes, everything.
But, have y'all, y'all hadn't reviewed the construction plans yet, Eddie?
I have.
Okay.
Yeah, we got them, we got the construction plans about eight, nine weeks ago. I thought they looked good. So it sounds like need to revisit this with covenants, right? Is that what I'm understanding?
If you raise this creek, you go away from the water, it's gonna be an outstretched water, if you raise this creek, the landline won't cut it out.
I'm glad we're having these discussions, uh, Wind Chase, Wind Song, Sun Chase, just remind everybody that was outside in the county and built in the city annexed it, little bit different. Uh, you go back to Rain Tree and in Town Station and Belle Oak, those in particular, uh, things have changed downstream. Uh, for instance, the woods have grown up below Old Town, and I believe are holding back water. So if you hold back water, it can't get out of there in Old Town, and that backs up water in Rain Tree. So, this conversation of getting water in and out, I'm telling you, I've walked the ground, Ole argued with me over here behind the terraces between the ditch and the terraces. There's an ancient, I think Matthew even argued with me one time, there's an ancient, when East Gate was built, a stormwater retention pond there that is so grown up, you got trees in it just bigger than...
Like behind Lost Pizza over there?
Yes, sir, on the other side of the ditch. There's a stormwater retention pond that nobody ever maintained. So, on this piece of property that you're talking about, you've got a problem upstream called Spears Crossing, I mean, I'm not fussing at Spears Crossing, but their stormwater retention ponds are full of water, they're not maintaining, so, yeah, and this is compounded more by when Grants Ferry comes up and you start doing development up there, then you just compound the problem of coming down. So we require these stormwater detention ponds to be built, but nobody, there's no maintenance of them. And I, I've asked this question in boardroom, you wanna sue Sun Chase, you wanna sue Old Town, you wanna sue, you wanna sue, you know, you, how, how do you wanna get into enforcement of taking care of stormwater ponds? And so one has an effect on the one below it, all the way down. I, I don't know what, I don't have an answer for you, you know, it's very bad to have a problem and not have a solution to the problem. Go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, and, and what you're talking about is if you have a subdivision downstream where water, exactly like what you're saying, Spears Crossing's water is going to go to this, and, and they're saying, well, that's not our water.
That's right.
That's Spears Crossing's water.
And you develop above, you develop Grants Ferry up in that pasture, then it's gonna be on Spears Crossing, and it's not gonna be their water. You see, it just compounds itself.
Matthew, when, when we're looking at a development like that, and, and I'm gonna use Hastings, Longleaf, Mineral Springs, Rain Tree, Old Town, Sylvia's Place, all that down Music Well, when, when somebody comes, okay, just say Rain Tree and Old Town were there, when somebody comes and wants to do Longleaf or Hastings, do we look at what was spec'd for Old Town? I mean, like, what, what was specified for Old Town was just for Old Town, but now all of a sudden, they got water from Longleaf coming into an eighteen-inch pipe and they need a thirty-six-inch pipe?
We can't put out more than that eighteen can handle, and that, that's the point, the detention pond is not to release anymore. So like, Longleaf, I'll take a little exception to, and I think some of the city people, I know that some of the homeowners admit, like on Longleaf in particular, there was a prob, there was an obvious problem going on along Music Well Road with those houses on the east side of Music Well Road, they were getting a pile of water when it rained hard, and a lot of it was coming out of Hastings, the first phase of Long, if you call it, the older stage. We specifically made them kind of take some water through a hill east to west into that big pond that goes back down there, and everybody along Music Well that I know of, it's, it has really worked, it's been a lot better. So, so we are sending, thank you, uh, we're sending less water east that way.
I was, I was one of those.
Okay.
And it has, it's made it so much better, because when it's been built, of course, Afton is not getting that water, they're getting it from the other side.
We did a lot of work there, um, and kind of to go to your question, like if you go back and look at the old plans for Old Town, Old Town shows all the water coming from the north from Rain Tree, and it shows their numbers on their hydraulics is pretty close to ours, uh, it's like a hundred and something acres coming from the north, coming from that way. But when you further investigate Rain Tree, Rain Tree was designed as, a lot of it was an open ditch subdivision. Somewhere along the way, they've gone on there and put storm drain in, the storm... Somewhere along the way, they've gone in there and put storm drain in, and storm drain was undersized, and you can't handle the water, and the water's coming up out of the inlets.
If you'll include, if you'll remind me, I'll include that in the next work session when we talk about Town Station.
Okay.
That area.
But, but I guess to get back to your question, yes, we have to look at the pipe downstream. The thing that we're trying to do a little bit more of, and got some language going into this, is, hey, if we know we've got an issue downstream, Mr. Developer, we want y'all to have to go above and beyond a little bit to help us out. I mean, we can't ask them for the world, you know, kind of back to Baker's comment, but we can ask them, you know, if we know we've got an issue down there, we sure don't want to exasperate it, but is there something that you can do, Mr. Developer, to help fix that? You know, can you detain a little bit more water here? Make your detention pond a little bit bigger? So we've got some wording like that that hasn't always been in there. So I, I, I mean, I'll tell you, rain water is the one thing that keeps me up at night when it rains hard. I can't sell my back porch and watch it rain and enjoy it, because I think about, you know, all the water that's out there, but we, we are, I say we as a whole, Tim, Carly, all the city, you know, Charles, he was here, Sam, we, I think we're, the job is being done reviewing this stuff and looking at it's, way, levels way above and beyond what it was 10 years ago.
Back to question one, so I'm sitting here shaking my head, I don't know what conversation y'all got off on about requiring studies be done and all this kind of stuff. It's no different than traffic impact studies. If we have a developer that comes in and wants to build a neighborhood, blah, 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 and he pays for his own guy to do a traffic impact study to give to us, then what's the validity of that? We need to be paying for our own traffic impact study. We need to be paying for our own hydrology study.
It's my.
Well, I don't know how you chart, well, you're saying, well, if the developer's paying for that study, the study's going to fall to the developer's. You're not paying them, you're not getting the full value of what I think we need. Well, just telling you, that's my observation dealing with everything I deal with every day.
If we, I mean, if we got to do a hydraulics study for a subdivision we're designing, we're not going to cut corners on it just because of who's paying it, the developer or whatnot. At the end of the day.
Well, I'm proud for you. Now, is everybody else on that rainbow of engineers out there doing that?
I don't know. I like to, I guess.
Heck, no. You know they're not. You know? We need to be paying for our own studies so that we own them. Just tell them our own CCTV stuff, you know, we, you know. Thank you. Enough of this. So we tell it?
You're saying we don't need to do it? I would say, wait until you get the covenants approved. These covenants say that there's 60 lots, well, we know there are 34, and I've been reviewing through it. And I think if they want the preliminary plat, because I agree with Matthew, I think we should wait to approve the preliminary plat, the covenants are in a form that you're okay with, so we avoid the whole thing down the road, it's a hell of a lot of work.
Okay. We're going to table, we're going to table this, but you don't have to make a motion. I'm going to table it. It's table, all right, we're going on to number two.
All right. Number two, consideration to set the public hearing for zoning amendments to Office Research Campus on September 3, 2024. Number three, consideration to set the public hearing for Rankin County property located on East Mark Drive from TND to I-2 on September 3, 2024. So it's a rezone and a conditional use.
Okay. Thanks, Sam. Appreciate all the time we spent on those. All right, so is there a motion to approve two and three under Community Development? Motion by Miss Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Chris Benson, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you for the discussion, Board. And Matthew, thank you for stepping up. Good discussion. Those, that's how we need to be talking. And Chief said he went to sleep, so he's glad to be up and walking around.
Thank you. Good evening. I have two items, can I take them together?
Yes, sir.
First one I have is consideration to approve changing Dwayne Martin to a part-time investigator and change rate of pay according to the memo. And number two, consideration to approve for investigator Robbie Reed to travel to Hoover, Alabama, to participate in the digital evidence investigations course on October 13 through 18 of 2024.
Is there a motion to approve those two items?
No motion.
Motion by Mr. David Ferens, second by Mr. Harry Williams, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Water fake.
Last one.
Moving.
You know it.
Go ahead, Chief.
I got four items, I want to take them all together. It's all the same to y'all. Item number one is consideration of a request to hire Lawton Burnham and Jackson Swales as firefighter trainees and set the rate of pay per the memo. Item number two is consideration of a request to purchase uniform pants from Southern Connection at lowest and best quote. Uh, yes, sir. Is it in the memo? I think it's in the memo. I apologize that it is, but I believe it's effective immediately.
Chief French threw him off, it's all his fault.
Well, I apologize, we kind of nodded off over there.
Are you making up for his mistake?
Good morning.
Yeah.
Item number three, consideration to approve paramedic school contracts from the School of EMS for Captain McClure and firefighter Max Chandler, and authorized division chief Jerry King to execute the same. Item number four is consideration for myself, Chief Wolford, and Chief King to travel to Merida, Mississippi to attend the midwinter fire chiefs conference.
Thank you, Chief. Is there a motion to approve those four items? Motion by Mr. Lou Coke, second by Miss Sharon Womack, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. There's no need for executive session, item removed and after the agenda. Motion to adjourn, please, until our next meeting. Motion by Miss Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Harry Williams, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, Board, for a long night, really appreciate it. Very much. Got a lot done. A lot more to do.